All right, let's get started.
I call this meeting in the Lakota Local School District Facilities Committee meeting on September 6th at 6:30 to order. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Adi?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. Bodie?
Here.
Mr. Sarge?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Zink, here. Mr. Hatfield? And Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Thank you. Board, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sarge?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
Thank you. Our volume does seem to be quite high this evening. I feel like I'm echoing in the room here. We'll go ahead and move to community meetings on the agenda. I assume that'll be you, Mrs. Fuller.
Yes. So last month, we talked about upcoming community meetings. And I just wanted to give a rundown of what I've secured so far. Next Wednesday, we'll be presenting to the District Parent Council and President's Council. They are joining for their monthly meeting. On October 19th at 5:00 PM, we'll be presenting. It's a community meeting open to everybody, but we'll also be presenting to the trustees of Liberty Township that had been an ask. It will be at the Liberty Township Administration Building, and it'll be 5:00 to 6:00. And then they have their trustee meeting beginning at 6:00. I'm still waiting to hear back from Westchester. My contact there is asking the trustees if they would be interested in co-hosting as well. So I will let you know as soon as I hear back. And then I did want to propose the, on October 24th, there is a board work session scheduled. That's Monday. We are struggling to find dates where Chris and Matt and Adam are all available. And what I would propose is if you do not have a set topic for that meeting, could we shift that to a community meeting since it's on everybody's calendar already? And Creekside has expressed an interest in hosting a community meeting at their building, which we've not been there before. We were at West Freshman, but we didn't go over to Creekside.
Let me suggest on the 24th that we discuss that when we have agenda this Friday.
Sure.
And then get back to you. And
we do something like a short, if we need a short meeting, like a short meeting, a short meeting and then community thing. Yeah, I just, I would suggest that we do it at Creekside instead of at Plains.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sure.
It has the five-year forecast when we approved at the beginning of the year. So would that mess up? Anything for you, Adam? October 24th. It says that the work session would be a five-year forecast.
No, I don't think, I don't think it will. I've been working a lot on that this week, and I'm hoping to, I'm hoping that I can have something to the board a little bit sooner than that. So I think that it'll be okay. I appreciate that.
So that's on there as a placeholder to make sure that we have finished that conversation by that point, so that we're ready to approve it in November.
But if, if we did need that, we could piggyback it right in there, too. That'd be fine.
That's anything else?
Yep, so that's what I have for the community meetings. We did send out a recap of the last Facilities Committee meeting in last week's district email. It's also posted on our website. We have social media posts scheduled to go to drive more people to the thought exchanges to get feedback there as well.
Very good. Any questions?
I was kind of confused. The trustees for Liberty Township, is that October the 19th?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. 5:00 PM, and it's over at their building over on 747.
Okay.
And then I'll let you know as soon as I hear back from Westchester.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a date that you're considering for Westchester?
No, I'm leaving that up to them to tell me when they're available. And if one of the three are not available, the other two could jump in. And it's not ideal, but we've done it before, so.
Right. FYI, I already have previous plans to be out of town, that date that you mentioned for Liberty Township. But will we be filming that so I could watch it after the fact? Do we know or?
Um, I had not planned on filming it. I can see if Liberty Township could because we'll be at their facility.
We have one we filmed on.
We do have one that's filmed on. It's, it'll be the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same presentation. We want to get it in front of more people.
All right.
Absolutely.
All right. If nothing further, board, let's step back to number three for a moment to approve the minutes of the August 8th meeting. We all should have those with you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sarge?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
We'll move to number five, the timeline for narrowing down the building configurations.
So can I jump in here again?
Absolutely.
Jump away, Mrs. Fuller.
So I have given you guys the, the timeline that Jim had handed out earlier this year. And I highlighted on there the select final master plan option. I just wanted to remind everybody that it has been scheduled for November, for the November meeting, that that's when you would vote on a plan, a final plan. That's what we've communicated to the community. That's what is on our website. So I know that there was questions last month about could we narrow down the grade band configuration? And that's fine if you, if you want to do that, but we need to communicate out to the community that there's going to be a change in the timeline there. We do have the thought exchanges out through October through the community meetings, trying to get more feedback as well as the scheduled meetings that we have.
Thank you. That's impressive.
Other than that, I think just being aware of the timeline and selecting options. Necessarily, we can't narrow down anything. It's just a matter, we do our presentations moving forward, whether we include all four options that we've talked about for the past couple of months or not. So there's still more work to do. I think at the last meeting, we talked about taking a little bit deeper dive into some of the potential operational costs. And I think the request from the administrative team was to see if we can narrow it down so we can start looking at that specifically at some options as well to try to get more specific on not only operational costs, but at the meetings we've attended with the community, they start having questions, okay, if we're going to reduce schools and my school's going to go away, where would that new school be? Where would the new high schools be? Where would this new third shared option be if we go with that option? So if we narrow down the grade band configuration, we can start getting to that level of detail and looking at, not necessarily narrowing down the option, but providing more detail with the options to make a better decision when it comes time to do that.
Okay. Anything else in terms of the timeline?
Not from my
Did you have anything?
No, I mean, he hit it.
So board, I think the discussion is, well, there's, there's several questions. I think at the last discussion that we had, I had suggested that we think about narrowing down where we can some of the configurations, but not the cost on the plans yet, because that begins to give them the opportunity to really drill down to the operational savings, which is important to our decision-making process. So I would suggest that we think about, are we in the place where we could say, for instance, option one, doing nothing is not something that I feel that we could do. And we're not taking a vote tonight by any means, but if we feel that we're in a place to have that discussion, we could do that. And we could take a vote of some sort on Monday night. So the floor is open for the board to weigh in on that. Mr. Adi, did you want to start us off?
Yes. I think it would help a lot if we narrowed down to, to my own perspective, which would give us more opportunity to dive down deeper and narrow it to what is more feasible so that when we vote, we vote on two. And in my, that's how, that's the way I'd say.
Anything else? Mrs. Bodie? Bye, Kelly.
I think, yeah, at this point, we have, I mean, I know we still have community meetings scheduled, but I feel like we've given the community a lot of opportunities with thought exchanges and having the whole presentation on the website to weigh in on what all four options are. But I do think at some point, we need to start narrowing because it's got to be easier for them to do the cost analysis if we're narrowing. I mean, I could narrow personally.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
I guess I have some concern about the communication that's already gone out and that we don't deviate from when we said we were going to narrow. Because I do think, as we've said before, we had less engagement than we might have hoped because it was during the summer months. And so that we would want to get additional feedback. So I think even if we're leaning towards narrowing to certain ones, I think still at least having them out there, even if we don't do the in-depth analysis right now, would still be helpful. So I would be more comfortable with still keeping the options there, but doing the more in-depth analysis of the ones that appear to be leaders based on the feedback we've gotten thus far, so that you have the opportunity to answer those questions and do that in-depth research. But we're still true to what we committed to, to the community and our communication plan originally.
Thank you. Mrs. Bodie?
With the point that I brought up last, at our last meeting, and a couple of times I've mentioned the economy. And I think at this point in time, the issues that are around infrastructure seems that it may be a good idea to put these discussions on hold and look at it again next year because of the economy and where it is headed. We are in a bad time to start building. I mean, right now, I feel like if you're going to build a house, we all know that this is not the time to build a house. And I think it's a horrible time to project major expenditures that may create a deficit. But I also do not see where we fully understand, or at least are not completely in agreement with how the facilities will be used in the future. And, and without that, we don't know exactly what we need. So again, my example is what grades do we want to put in our buildings? Do we want a swimming pool? Do we want a facility for Butler Tech? We need to decide that first before we what I mean was Butler Tech. So we have the computer science.
Cyber security?
Cyber security. Yeah, I was trying to think of that word today and I cannot. The cybersecurity program, if we want to do other things like that, we need to decide first what we want and then decide what buildings that we want to create. And again, with the economy the way it is, I am not confident that, or I'm not, not that I'm not confident, I just do not want to put that on the community in extra expenditure. And I think, I don't think now is the time. Now, we can continue to have conversations around it, but I don't think now is the time, especially in November with the economy the way it is. I don't think now is the time to, to have these discussions on, on the money aspect of it. And I think we need to decide what we want first in the configuration best for our students to improve their education and ensure that they're getting the best education necessary.
Thank you. Chris, do you want to lay out the timeframe for kind of how this whole thing will unfold? This does a refresher for all of us.
Sure. Once we narrow down the options or down to, if we get the grade band configuration first, we narrow that down, we can look at options within that grade band. Because if you look at the four options that we're looking at right now, two of them are the same grade configuration. So if you narrow it down to that grade configuration, we already have two options available. But within that, if you decide to go with the way we like option two in that configuration, we can look at options within those options and say, okay, let's say if we had this grade band we like best, we can look at, does it make sense for a third shared options or does it make sense for the two new? We can start doing those side by side. So you could have a little bit more in-depth data with that to make a final decision to one option that you come down to. So we can narrow down the pool to a couple of grade band or one grade band configuration. We can look at several options within that grade band configuration and start to develop costs and stuff like that as we move along through that. So, and that can open up opportunities to say, hey, do we want a pool? Do we want other partnerships out there that we're, we haven't discussed or explored at this time with any kind of private industry that we want to look at? Start having more in-depth conversations of, okay, if we think these 10 buildings that have been deemed by the OFCC as something that we want to replace, what do we do with that land? Do we repurpose that land for, and start putting layouts, not detailed layouts, but okay, if we wanted to do option four, we want to put high schools at this location and this location, how that look like on that site? How would that flow? Just start those conversations as well so you can have a little bit more data and feedback. And from there, we can say, hey, we like this, we don't like this. Can we fine tune these types of things? So provides a little bit more data and information for you to further narrow down to one final option at the board. So anything to mention?
I, I always look at the processes as, you know, it's, you start from clear up here to mile high look. And when you're done, you're clear down here into the details. And right now in your process, you're still, you're still looking at the very, very big picture. And there's, as Chris said, and there's, there's a thousand details to discuss and talk about as you narrow the process down. So there again, I think your, your track is good, that you're kind of looking at the big picture and picking some options maybe. And then, yes, I think to your point, then those, those little, those smaller pieces will start to become more apparent. And you can kind of work those as you go. So again, I, I think it's this narrowing process. And I think the reality is you're still way up here. So I guess what I'm
How would you say we are with the timing as far as our millage falling off in 2028? If you look at it that way, are we on the right timeline to align with that? Or are we early?
There again, if you kind of look at the schedule that we laid out, there's a long-term schedule. And originally, we, we had kind of anticipated maybe kind of a first round or a first phase. And then you would maybe get some funding and some of your millage would come off. And then maybe that would then pay for the second round of projects. So I think you're, Chris, I think you're still kind of on that schedule, but you do have to keep moving. The process is, there is, it is a long, is a long process of the planning and getting documents and the OFCC submittals and all that is a very, it's a very long process. So you're not starting any too early.
Right. I, I think with that plan, once we get it narrowed down and we have our plan, when we decide to execute that plan would be a whole nother discussion, decision based off when millage falls off, based on the economy at the time. But long as we have our plan ready to go, shovel-ready project, for lack of a better term, that's when we could decide when is the best time to go to the community and look at this in that perspective, looking at the millage fall off, looking at the timing of the economy. Those types of things would be the last part of the discussion. But if we have this plan ready to go, we can, we can be nimble and implement that whenever the board and the community feels like we're ready to do that. And I feel like sort of wedged in there are the LFIs in terms of computer science or the pool idea. I think it's, it's part of that, but I think we had to figure out the configuration in the buildings and everything else with the state first, because all that's going to be locally funded, even with Butler Tech.
My concern comes in at putting it on hold because we've had it on hold for a couple of years is the long-term cost of basically band-aiding everything. I mean, we know we had some issues over the weekend with flooding in some of the buildings. And so I worry that if we put this completely on hold and we don't keep with the process of making the decision in November and move, you know, and seeing then how that affects it in the long run, we're going to spend more money because we're piecemealing and band-aiding buildings that are in desperate need. Am I correct or?
Yeah, I think that is where I'm also looking at. Because the thing is, even if we remain where we are right now, in my perspective, it's going to even, at the end, cost us more. Like you said, we're having flooding. The buildings are not according to the code. Very soon, we're going to be out, out of our code from the state. And it's going to cost us more. We're going to keep maintaining. So narrowing it, me at this point, if we narrow it down to two, we're not making the final decision, which we're targeting November, based on what you said, right? So with the two narrowed, it's going to give you more opportunity to dig down and give us all the cost on projections instead of doing so many at the time.
My only, sorry. My only concern is currently with, I hate to stick on this economy thing, but it's crappy right now. And so we have a lot of people who can't afford gas. They can't afford groceries because they're doubled in price. And so to talk about money right now, I don't think it's physically responsible. And I also am concerned, so we also have the backpack bill, which is in legislation. I'm pretty sure that in the next couple of years, it's going to get passed. And so what I would like us to look at as well is the fact that we're going to have to figure out how to market Lakota. If there are, you know, situations arise where potentially, you know, we lose students and then we're building these bigger facilities or this, we're building to accommodate more students, but then it shrinks down. So then we have to figure out with, at that point, with what we have, how do we accommodate? Or how do we market to more people and more parents? I find that that might be a problem looming in the future. It might not be, I hope not. But if it is, we have to figure out how to, how to, I guess, basically deal with that. And again, I think we need to decide. I, I feel like with our conversations, we have said that we like that last one, the last option better because we all agree that we, and I think Julie, you even stated that you like the configuration of the, like the fifth graders who are able to help with the kindergartners and the first graders. I'm not sure if that was you or Kelly. But someone mentioned, one of you mentioned that you like that because you have the upperclassmen who are able to kind of be there for the younger classmen. And if that's something that we like, then I think we should say, hey, this is what we want. And then we only have, like you said, we only have one option for that configuration. And we need to break, if that's the configuration, that might not be the best option for us. There might be other configure, there might be other, I don't even know what it's called.
Details.
Yeah, like what, do we need to add another building? You know, like, and then we, I mean, there's, there's a lot to this and it's overwhelming. Sometimes I think it can be, but I think we need to figure out, number one, is now the right time fiscally to put this on our community? And we already have a deficit, so then we will be going into a deficit. And then also, we need to figure out what we want. When you go buy a house, you've got three kids and you've got a set of parents or one parent. You buy your house to fit your needs. You don't say, okay, well, I've got three kids, I'm going to buy this one bedroom and I'm going to, you know, I mean, people do do that and they make it work. But ultimately, when you are spending money, you want to find the house that fits your family's needs. And we want, as a school district, to find the facilities that meets our students' needs. And I think we need to make sure, we need to figure out what that is first. And I think that, to me, that's what we're in the process of doing. And with changes in enrollment, as you mentioned, I mean, this is a 10-year phased-in project. And part of that, I think, gives that opportunity to adjust should we need to. And part of the objective is to make sure that what we're doing has the flexibility as needs change as we decide to add a cyber academy or whatever the next cyber academy is, that we have this done in such a manner that it can continue to grow and adapt to meet our needs. Because this is not even just the 10 years of this phase-in plan. This is to last us the next 30, 50 years, like our current buildings have done. You're going to continue to allow them to adapt to meet the district's needs. And I think we have to be careful, too, when we're talking about the financing piece. As Adam said, we talked about the bonds and rolling off. And we need to make sure we differentiate between those capital expenses as well as operational efficiencies. So while this may require an investment of capital expenses, we're also looking at the potential for more efficiency on the operations side. And I think, again, no time is that more relevant than right now when we're having a hard time filling some of those vacancies and such. We might actually be better able to meet our students' needs by recognizing those operational efficiencies.
It, it because it's sorry. The other thing is, is having a plan in place and picking a plan in November. And we all want to be, you know, fiscally responsible, our community. We're not digging dirt like in December. The first dirt turning, even if we elected a plan in November, would be how many years down the road, Chris?
Depends on the bond.
Right.
We've already talked about it before, we have to do a bond. So there's no dirt turning until that happens.
So that happens. I just think we have got to start, to be able to get a decent plan, we have got to start narrowing what it is we want. And if that means looking at two plans closer than two others so that we are ready to make a vote on, in November, I think that having a plan ready for when we're ready does make sense. And I'm also not comfortable holding off or making a plan based on a legislative bill. I mean, the legislator, legislation could go either way any day. I don't know if that should be a consideration in making a decision like that.
Anything further? Isaac?
Good.
So several points that were well taken by everyone. I agree with Darby's point that we are not in a place to put a bond issue in front of our community in any way. And Julie, you referenced this, and Darby, you did to some extent, too, the flexibility and agility that we need to be responsive to things like the backpack bill, to changing educational needs, whatever those are, has to be an integral part of our plan, no matter what it is. And so I think that's really important that the board's in agreement with that at this point, that we want that to be at the forefront of what we're doing because we don't want to be going back to our taxpayers and we do want to be fiscally responsible. I'm going to suggest, listening to everybody's thoughts, so let me lay this out and, and see if we can all land on this. I think it's really important to narrow our focus, whether it's officially or unofficially, as Julie has suggested. If we're comfortable with giving our administration some guidance on where we're thinking about narrowing it down to, but at the same time, open to any feedback that we get from our remaining community conversations, including from our locally elected leaders. I think that's important to hear their perspective as well, as our partners and what we do with the district. So I think an informal narrowing down and saying we want to start seeing operational efficiencies, we need to understand those dollars and how that's going to look with an official vote on the grade configuration in November, as we said, but perhaps hold off on the vote on our cost as we look at specific options, as we look at those details that we're talking about meeting, needing to change out and are there savings here? And we feel like this is worth an investment and making a vote on the dollar part of it down the road.
How far down the road?
I'm open to suggestions. I'm just trying to put a plan forward so that we're making progress in some way with what we're talking about. We have a lot of, I think, thoughts in common at the table. And there's also some very legitimate individual concerns. So what are you thinking?
I think too, that once we, even if we were to pick an option, say in November, within that, I mean, there are tweaks within all of the options, correct?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, we could decide, okay, let's vote in November and we're all going to vote on option one.
Which is why I'm saying, yeah, let's just think about the grade configuration itself. What's best for our students? What's best for their educational experience? How does that provide them with the best experience possible? And narrow it down to that. What is the best grade configuration? What do we want the buildings to contain? And then move on from there because I think we can get much more specific about, then it's a, for want of a better term, an a la carte menu of, so within that configuration, what are the priorities? Can we agree to that?
That's what, I think that's what I said. I think so.
I'm going to say it more.
I understand what, I understand. I think you understand, you, you understand my point. Because if we narrow it down right now, in November, it's going to give us, give the community more opportunity to also look at the two that we have decided. And then in November, when And then in November, when we vote for the, for the one out of the two, then the parameters cannot come in as in, okay, how do we tweak this to suit what our needs are. But if we leave this four and we go again to the community, it's the same thing. We were going around, around, around with the same thing.
And I think we continue to get a lot of questions of finance, which we can't.
Yeah, we can answer. But if we get the two and then go down with with them, with the two, and say, okay, this is why we have chosen this two. But you we we in into the two, by then you have the numbers as well to guide us more in making the decision. And like Ms. Boddy said, right now, it's not a time to go to anybody for money, but we are making, this is a plan. And it's not going to be like, maybe next year, we're going to ask for the money. We don't know. As quickly as things unfold and things get better, we keep going. We are talking about ten years plan. If we're not planning right now, soon, we're not going to have anything at all. Because our schools will be out of code. More expenses on maintenance. So.
So are you in agreement with what I laid out?
Yes.
Okay. Word, how about the rest of you?
Again, I still have concern that we're not following our original communication plan as I understood it, which was narrowing in November. But perhaps I'm misunderstanding that.
So my suggestion is that we offer a feedback for where we want to see more financial information.
Right.
But by not doing the vote until November, we're leaving ourselves open to community input still.
Yep.
If that's okay. And that's what I was trying to say. If I didn't say that well, that's what I was saying.
We're narrowing to two right now or narrow, okay.
Darby, anything else?
I think that would be a good idea to narrow down the configuration in November. And then from there, we can add and discuss what would be the next thing that we need for our students to make them the most successful, what type of buildings, what would that look like? I mean, there's so many possibilities and options there. I mean, if we want a pool, then we need to make it happen. If we feel like that will benefit our students. If we want um an extra building for another type of like Butler Tech field, either to partner with them or to use our ourselves, then if we feel like that would be best for our students, we need to figure out how to make that happen. And then, I mean, there's so much, there's so much discussion.
But my concern, once again, becomes we have aging buildings and I don't want to put this on the back burner for the next four years. I I I am fine with discussing or voting in November. I just, we have to be mindful that we have some major issues in our buildings. And we know that we've been told that in the long run, if we don't do something, it's going to cost the district more. And then I feel like that's not being financially responsible to our community. But yeah, I'm fine with that plan for November.
All right, let me ask this question and we'll do this by, I hope somebody over there is keeping tallies. Let's offer individually what plans we think we want to see more financial information on. I will say for myself, I'd like to see more on three and four.
So, three and four.
I I think, me too. I think we, I think we pretty much said that last time, we all kind of leaned towards.
Just want to be very, very clear, we're not official, but.
I would like to see that on three and four. I I I, yes.
For me, I would say one and four, just so we have a benchmark as well as where we're going. So people realize the cost of status quo, essentially.
That makes sense.
And we probably already have that information, don't we, on maintaining and not doing.
We kind of do, yeah.
Okay. Darby.
I mean, I know option four, I would like more information on as far as the other. I am not decided on which other option, really. Um, I mean, I think it would be nice to have, number one, and if our structure stayed the same, what that, that cost would be to compare it.
When, when I said that we kind of do on option one, what that kind of means is that they have a plan for their facility upgrades that's already planned out.
If we did nothing.
Correct. So we can take that along with.
But if we maintain.
Yeah, the the maintenance plan. So we could take that along with the normal operational costs that we're currently doing.
Is that per year? Current, current operational.
It's a ten-year. Right now, we have it scheduled out. Yep. So still, ba- based around some assumptions of electric costs and things of that nature, we could go off what we're currently spending.
Matt?
I, one of the things I didn't hear, which helps, is no number two.
No number what?
Two.
I didn't hear number two.
Right. Just want to make sure. So, process of elimination.
So we're doing three options?
No, I I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I know that was consensus was no number two.
So we'll do one as a baseline.
Yeah.
Which should be work we already have. And then far more detail on three and four.
You know, one shouldn't take as big of a deep dive.
Right, right.
Three, three and four are, they have the same grade level configuration. So within that, you can look at, okay, what if we keep that great configuration and we do two brand-new high schools versus a third shared, so we can sort of look at those, compare them side by side as we go through. Because almost mix and match between the two with the same grade level.
And that's, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Like someone said, all a cart before, we could say, we know this great configuration, here's what we can do. Sort of have a cost, and we like this from a cost perspective better. We like this from an educational standpoint better.
I think that's exactly the kind of information that we need.
That's the direction we needed.
All right, do you feel that you have clear direction now to? And Betsy, we will look forward to hearing from the rest of our community conversations as well. You have a question?
I do. So when we have these next community meetings, I would imagine that Matt, Chris and Adam should share that the board is looking at, at a deeper financial dive for the option three and four grade band configuration. But you would, we would still like feedback for all four. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just so that we know how to position it.
I think reaffirm what we've heard so far. I mean, so far, I think that the feedback has been more positive.
And you, and you, you all have been at those meetings and everyone's asking us for that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I think at meetings that I've been to, Jenny was the only one that was able to say, since I'm leaving, I'll tell you the ones that I don't like.
She was pretty blunt about that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. All right, are we comfortable moving on from that?
Yes.
All right, let's go to review of questions. I know the board had some questions that they put forward. And if we have any further questions that we need information on, now is the time. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, so what I just handed out was, at the last meeting, Mr. D had a question about the difference in the cost between options uh three and four, eleven million dollars, uh and how much that would cost to our taxpayers. So the reason at that time that it was kind of a complicated question to ask is because there's a lot of variables. So based on our current tax year twenty-one district valuation, which is at the top there, three point seven billion. Then currently, an interest rate that we would probably be able to capture, a lot of things could happen, would be a four point five percent over thirty year, thirty-seven year amortization. So then if you go over to the side, you'll see the appraised value of homes that starts at two hundred thousand. We went around the normal uh one hundred thousand, because a lot of the homes in this community are a little higher than that. So we went with two hundred all the way down to one million dollar appraised value. Then if you go over to the next column, you'll see the taxable value, which is thirty-five percent of that, to then show the annual cost that it would be for eleven million dollars financed under these assumptions. So for the first, the two hundred thousand dollar home, if you looked at it by the month, that would be eighty-seven cents per month. If you looked at the most expensive on our list, which would be a million dollar appraised value home, um, tax assessed at three hundred and fifty thousand, that would be about four dollars and thirty-three cents per month. So as our tax base grows, that would become less. If our tax base shrunk, that would become more. So if interest rates would go up, that'll change. If they go down, that'll change. So there are a lot of variables. Right now, we're seeing around fifty million dollars per year in tax base growth. So just in the new construction, so hopefully that kind of helps a little bit.
Can I, can, can I confirm something?
Sure.
So you, these, these numbers in this box are the eleven million dollar difference. So the difference annually with someone that owns a million dollar home between.
Option three and four.
Would be an additional fifty dollars.
For the year, fifty-one dollars for the year, on the difference in cost between option three and option four. So that's not the total financing, the whole thing, just on the difference.
Reiterating the fact that the eleven million dollar difference really doesn't make much of a difference between a or three or four, which is what you guys, I think, said in the very beginning, that it's really minute, the difference when it comes down to your taxes. So not to settle, not to look at the price and be shell-shocked and say, this one's eleven million dollars cheaper. Because if you own a million dollar house, that's predominantly fifty dollars more or less.
Yeah, that's correct. And that, that was kind of the point at the very beginning of this whole process was, all of these options are so very close in pricing that looking at what the configurations might be best for the community, for the kids, would probably really be the big driver here.
Yeah, make more sense.
Yeah, but all the money's important. I mean, you know, fifty dollars is still fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, thank you, Adam. This, this is the kind of things that when we dig down deep and we begin to educate the community on what uh we're projecting, it makes more sense. Because when they see the number and you don't have this kind of information, it's scary. But the benefit, can you imagine the benefit that we we will get for fifty-one dollars if we have a one million dollar home? To the kids, what is fifty-one dollars? So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Uh, and and keep in mind too, this is going to be, you know, assuming that it was a voted bond issue. This would be in our debt service fund. The operational savings we talk about would impact our general fund. It could also potentially impact our cafeteria fund. So there's other funds that this could go into an impact based on an economy of scale.
And when we're talking about operational efficiencies, we'll expect to see those details too.
Yep.
That's terrific. Are there any questions, board, that we need to address before our next meeting?
So.
On another thing to add with this, sorry. At the very, very, very bottom, you'll see that it says that that is an estimated mileage of point one five for eleven million.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to suggest in our committee meetings, um, anytime we have this kind of information, data, graphs, whatever, we have a screen down. We do have a few people in the audience and we do have recordings of our meetings. So just so that everyone else can see the same thing that we're seeing, I would appreciate that if we could do that during our meetings.
Sure, no problem at all. And I will also add this into the minutes.
That'd be great.
We have that, just like I did with the previous minutes.
Terrific. Thank you, Adam.
Just, could you just recapture for everybody's well-being, especially my own, um, the vote in November will be for?
On the configuration. The grade configuration, and we will hold on costing part, I think, half a billion dollars is breathtaking to all of us. And so we're certainly looking at ways to reduce those costs on community. And I'll make another request. Also, that as we walk through the detailed part of this in our à la carte menu for how we reduce cost, I hope that we're bringing in our business community to ask them for input and ask for their assistance in how do we make this a a more recognizable number. And I don't think we bring them back in until we have those operational efficiencies to start to show them.
Agreed.
That's going to make a difference.
I just wanted to reiterate that, just so everybody knew what we were doing in November.
So I, excuse me, I would, can we also at the November meeting, I guess, once we do the great configuration, then maybe at the December meeting, talk about a different, I mean, an extension on the timeline? If we're not picking an option, we're not picking a configuration in November. Let's, we will have to redo the timeline, correct?
We could update the timeline without, Jimmy?
Yeah.
So we'll plan on an update to the timeline once that, once taken. Anything else we haven't discussed?
I I guess I'm not, so we're already saying we're for sure abandoning this timeline?
No, but we're, the timeline says we're picking an option in November and I just heard that we're not, is what I just understood, that we're just picking a configuration in November. Not an option.
Dividing, I think, the vote into two different pieces. So what's the great configuration we think looks good? What are the pieces and parts, the details that we think work within that configuration and then costing it?
So, I'm sorry, so that, the both votes won't be in the, at the November meeting, just the configuration.
We'd be ready for both votes in November. I'm, I'm open to whatever you all think, but I wouldn't think so. I think we have some discussion that happened before then.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are we all?
I guess I have some concern about getting away from the original timeline and.
That's what I don't want to go so far. I mean, I don't want another two years of discussing this.
I understand where you're coming from.
Because it's just, we're going to end up band-aided.
Yeah.
But I think we just need to allow some flexibility.
I just want, I know, but I want to make sure that if we work, we we work so closely with the timeline.
Even if the board makes the decision that we're not going to start the plan until down the road, I think the decisions need to be made.
And I think the important thing is we, we need to figure out what is best for our students and, and not get so hung up on a timeline in figuring out what is the best option and and choose what we think will benefits this, benefit the students the most. And I think we're all in agreeance that we need to figure out what we're wanting to put in the buildings and the gray configuration is the most beneficial, one of the most beneficial things for our students. So if we delay this a little bit, it's not like we're canceling it, it's just half of the process we're going to complete on November. And then we'll complete the rest once we have enough information, but at this point in time, we need more information to make a decision.
I I agree, but I also feel like sticking to having some sort of timeline is what's best for our students. And I agree that I, there's a lot of information that needs to be had. It, once we pick a, well, I think we picked a great configuration, basically, for, or or the, we either do this current configuration or the option four configuration, right? Okay. I got it now.
All right, we will look forward to more information coming out of our community gatherings. We'll look forward to more information from our committee in terms of operational savings and cost and all the rest. And until then, are there any further questions anyone needs to have addressed? Hearing one?
No.
We took a breath, Mrs. Casper.
I know, I was looking at the, when we talk about the November voting at the November board meeting, we know we have to change. Because our current board meeting schedule in November is during.
We do, and we will, yeah, this wouldn't be the time to fix the calendar.
No, I'm just saying, put that on the radar. Yes, just want to put it on the radar.
Mrs. Casper was saying, um, we'll have to change the date of our November meeting, so we will look at that on Monday night at a regular board meeting. All right, anything further? Anything further there? Hearing nothing? I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Second. I'll take Mr. D.
We all want to stay.
I know we're having a rollicking good time, guys, but it's time to go home. Do you please call the roll?
Mr. D, or sorry, Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Boddy?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Passarge?
Yes.
And Mr. Zink, yes.
Thanks, everyone.